I'd like to count the order of the May 16th, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting for Henry Ford College. May I have the first item, please?
Roll call, trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Di Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Moses.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Thor. Trustee Watts, here. Chair McDonald.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting, April 18th, 2022. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion by trustee Di Ambrosio and a support by trustee Barry. Are there any corrections?
I have one correction, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, trustee Moses.
Thank you. Just on the item where we were discussing the tuition phase, I said here that, and the record is clear, I just want to make sure that it's even clearer on my position, why I voted, the way I voted. So if I can add a sentence in there to say that I, here, it says trustee Moses reiterated his position that this was an easy option and the college should do better. I just want to make sure that this is not kind of something that is vague. So just to mention that tuition, we should be looking for other funds. I think I mentioned that in the meeting. So we should be looking for other ways before raising tuition.
Any other corrections? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee Moses.
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Yes.
Trustee Thor. Trustee Watts, yes. Chair McDonald.
Yes. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Hello. Thank you, President Cavalluna, Chair McDonald, and members of the board. It's an honor to be here at the trustees' meeting, and I'm excited to be reading the acknowledgements. My name is Kalima Gardner. I'm from Inkster, Michigan, and a graduate from Ramles High School. In the past, I have attended two or three colleges due to financial instability, and this took a detrimental toll on my mental health. While my friends were joyously attending prestigious institutions, I was pursuing my bachelor's degree in theater at a local community college. At times looked like my life would be a never-ending spiral of setbacks and disappointments, where I spent most of my days applying for scholarships and internships and getting rejected, and most importantly, dealing with grief. In the midst of pursuing my education, my father passed away November 26, 2021, from COVID, the greatest loss of all. When I thought life couldn't get harder, I was further thrust into unknown territory. It was hard for me to finish my classes, hard for me to get up in the morning, and even harder for me to find the light at the end of the tunnel and to find my purpose. However, in times of trouble, I remember my mother's wise words saying, "Everything happens for a reason." To honor these words, instead of being a victim to life, I decided to fight. I reached out to a wonderful counselor that helped me regain my mental and physical strength. I've been more vulnerable to my friends and let them see the parts I tried to hide for years, and I decided to take control of my life. As a result of my never-ending resilience, I made the dean's list last semester, which was the toughest semester of my life. I won fourth place at the Barrett Creative Writing Contest for one of my poems, and I am thrilled to say I won the Taco Bell Live Ma Scholarship for a video I've written and edited. Most of all, through all the trauma and hardships, I realized my passion. I want to dedicate my life to creating narratives, films, and television programs to help heal and comfort those who have experienced trauma and hardships and have triumphed over them like I have done. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. The Mirror News won several awards in multiple categories in this year's Michigan Community College Press Association Annual Student Newspaper Contest hosted by Central Michigan University. The MCCPA Newspaper Contest is open to all 28 community colleges in Michigan. The Mirror News won in the following categories: News Writing, first place, Amy Van Mail; honorable mention, Ali Sablini; End Death Enterprise Reporting, honorable mention, Mirror Staff News; Feature Story, second place, Lilian Grantham; Column Humor, first place, New Stratega; Sports News Story, honorable mention, Lilian Grantham; Original Comic Entertainment, third place, Catherine Warden; honorable mention, Edgar Gutierrez; News Photo, third place, Catherine Warden; Informational Graphic, third place, Edgar Gutierrez; honorable mention, Joanna Chirris; Headline Writing, honorable mention, Tyler Stewart; Cover Design, first place, Lilian Grantham; Inside Page Design, second place, Lila Bearman; Multimedia Reporting, second place, Fatima Nakita, Tyler Stewart, and Catherine Warden; and for Video Production or Online Audio Slide, honorable mention, Joanna Chirris. For News Website, honorable mention, the Mirror News staff, and General Excellence, honorable mention, the Mirror News staff. Second, each year, the English Department conducts the Barrett Creative Writing Contest and the Larry Culture Poetry Prize Contest to recognize the work of our talented students. This year's award ceremony, at which winners shared from their work, was held on April 21st, both in person and live stream on Zoom. For the Barrett Contest, the winners are: First place, Joaquin Bear; Second place, Ashley Trent; Third place, Elena Will; Fourth place, Kalima Gardner; Fifth place, Georgia Beatty; and honorable mention, Darcy Pastor. Elena Will is also the winner of the Larry Culture Poetry Prize. Congratulations to these talented writers and to all students who submitted entries. The talent of our students, the ability they demonstrate, and the courage they exhibit in sharing their work with the community is impressive. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Do you have any questions I can answer for you?
I want to first start with just a statement, Ms. Gardner. After all the setbacks you have, you had a string of successes, and I want to just congratulate you, and I am certain that your father is very proud.
Don't make me cry. Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So I wanted to say I'm sorry to hear about your dad. And if you were to go back to when you were feeling low, what advice would you give yourself?
I would tell myself, in moments when you feel like your life is over or that everything is going wrong, I would say it's to reach out for help and to communicate with people. And I feel like that was one of the reasons why I got through all this, the hardships and the setbacks, because I reached out to my mom and I opened up to my friends, and then I got professional help with a therapist and a counselor. So just communicate and let people know your struggles, because then they can help you.
And then the second part is that you said you wanted to go forward for your future. You wanted to do film and have a narrative or be the person who creates those narratives. With those narratives, will you weave in the struggles that you've had in the last couple of years?
Yes. I also want to, I kind of do want to do like certain films, or, well, mainly it will be about hardships and setbacks, but I feel like these are things that a lot of people can maybe resonate with or connect with. So it's not necessarily about me, about my personal hardships, but things that everyone can connect with, so.
Well, and I think that you have this way of connecting with people, so I think if you were to come up with those narratives, I think it'd be very, it would be a good tool for young people to have. So I would encourage you to go forward with that.
Trustee Moses.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Gardner, I concur with my colleagues. You're an inspiration to all of us, so thank you. Please keep on telling your story to others so you can inspire others who are probably in the same boat as you are. My question is about, you mentioned earlier that you went to two different institutions, and you found a counselor here. Mr. President, can she mention the counselor's name, Madam Chair, so we can acknowledge that counsel? Was that Henry Ford?
Yeah, it was Henry Ford, yeah.
Can we mention their name?
Yeah, I know, I can remember her first name. Ms. Hildress?
Okay.
She's, yeah. Oh, okay, everyone knows her, cool.
Brenda Hildress.
Why did you choose Henry Ford among the other two?
I heard that it was a really good community college. It was really affordable and that the staff and the people were really nice and encouraging. So I was like, oh, why not? Let me try Henry Ford, and I really like it here, so.
Glad that, I'm glad that you did. Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
I'm listening to you speak today. I'm looking behind you, the sun is shining. I just want to say I'm proud of you.
Oh, thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere yet.
That was just your first round of applause.
Now the real question.
President Cavalluna.
Thank you. Ms. Gardner, my name's Russ Cavalluna. I don't believe we've had the pleasure of meeting, is that right?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments and ask you a few questions. First, congratulations on fourth place in the Barrett Competition. It's probably not easy to put your own art and poem and thoughts up for competition, and I think it's just fantastic that you were elected a fourth-place finisher in that. Congratulations on the dean's list. But the thing I want to congratulate you more than anything about is something that trustee Watts mentioned, that you have a way of connecting with people. And that's the reason why I asked if you and I had met before, because I would have been very surprised if I had met you before, because you made such an impression in, you know, 60 seconds of speaking to me, to us. So one comment and then a question. You have a very effective way of communicating by showing vulnerability and showing us who you are, even when it's explaining things that were probably really tough for you. And I want you to know that I have tried to do that myself in public speaking, and I find it kind of hard, but you do it with grace. I hope that it's not terrifying for you, because it doesn't seem.
I was a little nervous, to be honest, but I'm surprised that myself. I'm like, oh, I'm not as nervous as I thought I would be.
Well, all right. Well, then it took you some courage to do that, and I want to reinforce that you made the right choice by standing up and being courageous in doing that, because it was very effective. And if you want to be a communicator and a performer in life, I want to tell you that your communication and performance ability was really, really impressive today. And one of the strategies you used was to show us who you were through a place of vulnerability. Which brings me to my question. How long have you been doing this, speaking to people who you don't know and explaining your life and doing so in such a really meaningful way?
I was, when I was at Eastern Michigan University, I was in theater for about a year, and then when I was at Udi Mercy, about like a semester. So it really hasn't been that long, because I'm really surprised I'm doing really good. So it hasn't been that long.
You know, they say something, it probably applies to show business, they say fake it until you make it. And if you're faking it, you're doing a heck of a job. I think you may have made it. So please know that what these trustees have said is just a small group of voices that are proud to have you here, and we're glad you're comfortable here. So thank you for trusting us for your place, your third place, probably your last place in community college. So get that certificate, and then on to bigger and better things.
And please share your experiences with others that you know.
Okay, that's the plan. That's the goal.
And your experiences here at the college, too.
Okay.
One last comment.
Certainly.
Just FYI, your first name in Arabic means the most generous.
Yeah.
Just so you know, you knew that.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
You're not obliged to stay at the meeting if you have other things to do.
Okay.
Next item, please. President's item.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will be very brief tonight. I want to make two comments and one announcement. Both comments are explaining some things, points of pride for our college. The first is something that Ms. Gardner just mentioned, and that is the Barrett Competition, that I was really, really excited to be back and watch. The two top finishers were Mr. Bear, who gave a fantastic rendition about, and I know my colleague, Peter Kim, who's in the faculty here, was there, I think, Dr. Perry, were you there for that? I don't know if you were there, but I do know several of my colleagues in the faculty were there, and if they were to give you a rendition of what Mr. Bear's talk would be, I suspect they would say it was an interesting autobiographical story about Mr. Bear's Native American heritage, a difficult romantic interaction he had, and how he learned about himself. And again, somewhat like Ms. Gardner here, I mean, it's just fantastic to see a student, one of our younger students, taking the risk of explaining his background through a poetic and artistic rendition of his life. And if you ever want to see some of the really fantastic writers and thinkers at HFC, I would commend you to see the Barrett Creative Writing Contest that is usually organized by my friend, Professor Reitz, and this year it was also. The second-place winner, you probably remember, is Ashley Trent. She spoke to you just like Ms. Gardner did several months ago, and she gave a similarly heart-wrenching and poetic rendition about her relationship with her father that spanned, this poem spanned from the time her father was dealing with her mother's death and how their relationship changed and had highs and lows. Another really, really wonderful way of expressing a young person's life, what it meant to them. And if you were in that room along with me, you were just gripped by Ms. Trent. I went up to her and I asked her, I said, "How do you get so comfortable talking about some, you know, there's some pretty difficult topics in that talk?" And she said, "What I've found is that when I write about this, I deal with it better, and it has meaning for other people." And I just tell you, trustees, this is the site, this is the place where that kind of education and collaboration can take place. So again, please do, next year around, come check out the Barrett Creative Writing Contest. The other thing I want to make a comment about is the graduation commencement ceremonies that we had last weekend and how enjoyable they were for everyone. And we had two in the Henry Ford College and one for Henry Ford Early College. Some of you trustees join me, I appreciate you being there. And if you did attend, you saw that we had two really strong national leaders, both women leaders in Congress. Senator Debbie Stabenow and Congresswoman Debbie Dingell address our graduates. It was a great event. I really, really forgot how wonderful it is to be with graduates and see them walk across the stage. And if you weren't there, please take some time to check it out on YouTube. We were proud to have livestreamed it, and now we also have that on YouTube, so you can see what a wonderful celebration our educational outcomes can deliver. The Henry Ford Early College was last Saturday, and that was at the Dearborn High, where we celebrated several, several Henry Ford Early College graduates. And as you probably know, that is the archetype example of collaboration between a P-12 and a community college, where these students attend our college and their high school here on our campus for five years, and in some instances earn up to 90 credits of college credit for free. And we at the college are so proud of that partnership, and to see those students move towards hopeful careers in medicine and advanced manufacturing, and now the third early college is associated with those who want to become teachers. It was a really enjoyable event out in nice, warm, and end of May, or middle of May is not always easy to guess the weather, and we got good weather, so that was a wonderful, wonderful event. The last thing I want to mention, Madam Chair, is something I just sent to the board this afternoon, less than two hours ago, in an email that outlines what we have, what we will announce tomorrow morning, and that is, you may have seen that throughout the history of this pandemic, we have tried our best to make the best decisions about how to keep our institution open and functioning, but also safe. One of the main resources we relied upon is the Centers for Disease Control, and they recently outlined that the county we're in is experiencing uptick in COVID-19 cases, the particular variant that probably has our colleague not here today, but that some of the folks in our community wanted us to follow the CDC's recommendation to have masks in public places where social distancing can't be accomplished, primarily classrooms. In fact, I'll just be candid, the two collective bargaining units that represent our faculty were pretty strong in asking me to revisit a decision we just recently made to take the masks off of being required. And so, beginning around Friday last week and throughout the weekend, and then even till this afternoon, we were quickly evaluating that request with several pieces of information. One, the COVID response team, one, direct really, interactions with the collective bargaining unit leaders. Candidly, the chair of the board and myself communicated about this, and then this afternoon, I decided, and we'll make an announcement tomorrow morning, that we will go back to a mask mandate for classrooms and labs. Those areas that are not classrooms or labs will have what we have currently, which is a strong recommendation for masks. I'll just say this about this, we're going, we're going on many, many months, more than one year, on these tough decisions. I recognize that this decision probably has more people thinking it's wrong than it's right. I will promise you that we'll always do our very best to make the best decision or the least difficult or least wrong decision. And one thing we've been served well by is to follow the CDC. And the CDC has changed its recommendation. And Madam Chair, when I asked to be your president, I did not expect to have to make these types of decisions in a pandemic. And I've looked for areas that we can rely on that have professionals who do have it as their career to make these recommendations. And so, for those of you that really don't want to have the mask, and that's a reasonable decision. I'm not saying that's unreasonable, but please understand, we're adding the mask mandate back on starting tomorrow, because we've been well-served by following the CDC. And the last thing I'll just say, again, reasonable minds can differ, and I'm not suggesting anyone who disagrees with this is wrong. But the faculty have been standing and delivering in front of our students for an entire pandemic's length. And when they ask me to consider something that they believe affects their safety, I will give it a presumption of correct analysis. Now, sometimes we may not agree, but in this instance, I think you should see my decision, trustees, as giving due deference to my colleagues who are standing in front of classrooms. This is late-breaking news, trustees. Again, I sent this to you this afternoon, I talked with the chair about this, and I've just now communicated with the leaders of the collective bargaining units. I apologize that this is something that you may just be coming to know now, and I'm not suggesting that all the institutions, including the P-12, should follow this. This is a unique decision for HFC. But, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the trustees have about this.
I just have a question about if this is going to be revisited, and what criteria are you basing your decision on?
Yeah, well, we constantly evaluate what the protocols should be, whether they be a form to be on campus, masks, social distancing. So the answer to it is we'll constantly evaluate it. And I would be foolish to tell you, trustee Moses, that I can tell you, when this happens, we'll change this way. I can tell you some of the factors we'll look at, but I can't, I cannot tell you that there are seven checks that if the boxes are checked, we change. And I ask for anyone who's concerned about this to give me your feedback, I'm always open to hear it, and to as much as you can, give me your grace and patience in evaluating these. And I'll be honest, the two union presidents who are the most vocal about this, President Rader and President Boza, gave me that, grace and patience, and I appreciate it.
I want to add something, too. I am also part of the COVID response team, and we do have continuing meetings set up on a continuous basis. If we've come to the time where there is a meeting and there's nothing new to discuss, those meetings are canceled, but they are continuing. And when an item like this comes up, there is, it's an excellent team. They bring lots of knowledge to the table, lots of ideas. Again, we don't always disagree, but it's really good, valuable discussion. So I just wanted to let you know that that's continuing. Trustee Petchikoff.
Yeah, I just have one quick, since this is something that is changing overnight, basically, are we going to have additional resources available for those students who come onto campus unprepared and/or staff in the way of additional masks and whatever, because they might not have gotten the word, so to speak, to have everything ready again?
Yeah, my intention is to do that as much as possible with physical resources, but I can tell you that the most valuable resource in this, and I will ask for this, and I have every belief that it'll be delivered, is that we'll ask faculty to be caring and consider it with students, who probably will be surprised. In fact, I'll just be candid, several will probably be frustrated with this change. So I will ask my faculty colleagues to understand that if they are the first to give the news to students, they do so in a way that is considerate to the, probably, in some instances, the frustrating new news.
Anyone else? Do you have anything else, President?
No, I promised to be short. I probably didn't live up to that, but I appreciate it.
I'm going to add one thing. When we talked about graduations, I just want to mention the nurse's penning ceremony.
Well, that's, thank you.
It was outstanding. The faculty, the nursing faculty did a great job, the students, the, it was just electric, the whole atmosphere, and we did it in the gym this year, which I think worked out very well. And I just can't say enough about, the students were so excited, their families were just thrilled, and what a wonderful ceremony. So, and also, I was surprised by being presented as an honorary nursing student with my honorary pen, so thank you very much. That was quite the surprise, and I appreciate it. And absolutely, you have my continuing support, and you have for many years. It's an amazing program, and you turn out amazing students. And every chance I get, when I'm in the hospital or in some situation where I need medical care, I ask them where they graduated from, and I do often hear Henry Ford College with great things to say about it, so. I just wanted to add that.
You send the nurses back when they say the wrong college.
And there were, Chair, there were 80 grads, so congratulations to all.
Very proud of every one of them. Okay, I think we're good. Next item, please.
Discussion items. Winter 2022 Proposed TIF Projects, Board Report Number 43, I'm sorry, 4635, Mr. Robert James, Chair Technology Investment Committee.
Hi, everyone. How are you all doing tonight? I'm Bob James, sports instructor and current chair of the TIF Committee. I'd like to talk about some of the projects that have come up to you for potential funding. We've had some really, really great projects. We had a total of about $770,000 available for funding, and we were able to get projects that totaled somewhere around $615,000. Some of the projects that were really exciting included some new lighting information, new lighting at the Avery Theater, and that is, the project manager is Steve Glazer. I couldn't tell you all the details exactly of what that stuff is, I'm not a theater major, but if it has a lot of computer consoles on it, now we're talking. One of the projects that came from, was funded from a previous term, was the project director, Dr. Perry. They're doing a lecture capture room over there in the political science area. That one was from a different term. We brought that forward for potential funding. Another project over in the K Building, upgrading some of the electronic equipment and adding some audiovisual things into the K322 classroom. This is used by the business area. It also has, you know, the business law and some of the paralegal classes in them. Right now, it doesn't have any equipment in it, so this is new equipment being installed into that room. Within the accounting area, one of the accounting rooms that, over the past several years, you all have funded computer carts in the accounting rooms. There's two main accounting rooms, and now we'd like to add some large hanging TVs for some of the presentations. A lot of things that they do are in need of displays, and looking at the rooms, students in the back weren't able to see a lot of the material. So adding these larger screens will help present and show some of the material on there. One of the more, one of the exciting is academic affairs. We want to fund renovation of some rooms into a high-flex area, adding an extra camera, adding some more visual, so that, so students are able to either come into the classroom or they can watch it from the screen. into the classroom, or they can watch it from the stream. Right now, a lot of the classrooms have, some of them are using portable cameras, and very difficult to see, you know, a board and stuff like that on the stream itself. So by adding the multiple cameras, upgrading some of the technology in the rooms, we're hoping that students will be able to see it a little bit better that are looking virtually. So this is a brand spanking new modality for us, in which we hope that we'll, you know, the students who feel like coming on campus will be able to be in the room. We've actually done several classes this term in the high-flex modality, where they can either come into the classroom, or they can watch it remotely, or watch the stream, however they want to do it. All this is recorded so that students can actually see the class afterwards also. Another project in the Health and Human Services is to get some updated equipment. Liz Hoffman is the project lead for this one, upgrading some of the computers in the lab, where, you know, it's on a, it'll be in a cart so that they can wheel it into different classrooms. Another, another high-flex is the, is the teaching-learning exploratory area, where the pre-education, we're going to convert the classroom there into the high-flex modality with the cameras and some of the equipment. Another one that I don't have a lot of background in, Susan McGraw is here if you have any questions in the telecommunications area. We want to upgrade the studio equipment that's in that area. And that's pretty much it. Anybody have any questions?
Trustee Pechikov?
This isn't to start rumors or to discount anything, but since we're going to be investing a lot of money, it looks like in mostly equipment as opposed to anything else. Some of this is going to be installed in buildings that may, we've had many conversations about need to renovate at some point in time. Is all of this equipment, or the majority of this equipment, something that we can remove fairly easily if we were lucky enough to run into the funding to do some of the renovations we know should be addressed at some point in time?
So all of the equipment and all of the installation has already gone through Ruben. And so he's familiar with all of this. And so I rely on him to, like, for example, the TVs that were going to be put into the accounting area, he specifically went in there and said, well, we need to do this type of installation rather than what we had planned, just for that reason, because there's a potential for that area to get renovated. And we want to make sure that this equipment can be taken down, put back up.
Okay, that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Trustee Mosip?
Yeah. On this high-flex thing, is this as a result of the pandemic, or are we, did the technology committee see this coming, that we have some students who prefer, sorry?
Believe it or not, high-flex has been around for 10 years.
Correct.
Even longer than that. We had the creator of high-flex come in in February and give us a presentation demo and had us walk through a bunch of things. And so this modality is not anything new. We've kind of been doing it, but we haven't really had the opportunity to allow students. It's been like our LWD, Live Without the Drive. During the pandemic, if at all possible, we've been doing that, doing virtual, touching the contact with the students virtually. Now, we'd like to take it one step further and allow those students who feel comfortable about coming in to be able to come in and interact directly. And some students that we've talked to can't wait to get to that. Other students said, hey, I'm just fine with, you know, watching it virtually and interacting that way.
Yeah. The reason I ask that is because I've seen some amazing stuff with augmented reality right now about classroom experience, that you could be at home, and you feel like you're in a classroom.
Well, that's why that, that...
We need to get there at one point.
That takes a lot of really cool green screens and...
A lot of innovation. Yeah. And it's there now, so.
Yep.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Your committee must be a fun committee to work with. And the reason I say that, the reason I say that...
When you walk in and say, we have three-quarters of a million dollars to spend.
Yes.
Who wouldn't like that?
What we're doing is we're taking the students' money, reinvesting it back to students. So I always look forward to his reports, so thank you for what you do.
And we have some exciting projects this term. I was, I would, you know, every time that I worry about, I talk to Russ and say, hey, could you help me get the word out? Because I don't want to stand up in front of the committee and say, well, where's all the projects? Why haven't you spent this money?
Just one more thing that I would like to add, to, on the same vein as Trustee Barry, is I love that there's so many projects that are spread throughout the campus. And again, like you said, we are allowing the students that are paying into this TIP fund to reap the rewards of it. And I think that's very important. So, thank you very much.
One quick thing. There's kind of two pieces to the TIP. One of them is the infrastructure, and the other one is this project. And some of the infrastructure project, including upgrading a lot of our servers, and expanding some of the services that we provide our students, such as disk space, and, of course, all of the things that instructors record has to go someplace. And that's on those servers here within the college. So we have to expand that to provide services. And of course, one of the big things is the firewall has been funded through this project.
And everybody benefits.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please. Action items, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. For action, who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees, and please limit comments to three minutes. We have Mr. Eric Rader would like to come to the board and speak about COVID protocols.
Thank you, Chair. McDonald, members of the board, President Cavalluna. I wasn't going to speak, and I won't speak long, but I wanted to thank Russ for his comments about the input that President Boza and I made about this decision, and appreciate your consideration of faculty views. As he said, we have been, many of us have been facing students throughout, at least not through the entire pandemic, but through a good chunk of the last year. And then, not every faculty member is going to be pleased with this decision, but I stand here to say that I do support it. It was something that I, I mean, a week ago or 10 days ago, it looked like it was going to be okay not to have the mandate in place. And then our numbers have been shooting up, and the CDC had its recommendation. And I appreciate that. I served on the Return to Campus Committee, or COVID Response Team now, from the beginning. President McDonald had appointed me back in, probably around this time, two years ago. And we've really appreciated Chair McDonald's participation, in particular, on that, on that committee. She's brought a lot of good insight from both the P-12 and just her own insight into this. The other thing I would say is I had a wonderful opportunity to work with the people on that committee, which is made up of people from all the sectors of the campus. Stacy Buchanan, who is treasurer for 1650, is now the 1650 representative. I didn't think I needed to stay on that as, now that I'm president of the local union, but, and she's been very good in representing the views of 1650, as well as her own scientific background. So, but I just wanted to express appreciation for giving consideration to the views of faculty on this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Rader. Can he add a blue card?
Nope.
Next item, please.
Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the action below.
I just, I just have a question of information for number, item number three. Even though we traditionally are having a roll call vote for all of these, do we need to pull this and vote on it separately?
No, I already, I already asked that question, and we do not. We can include them on.
Include that as long as we're doing the roll call vote. Okay, good.
Madam Chair, I just have a question on number one.
On number one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We haven't, we haven't made a motion yet. Sorry. We made a motion and a support?
I'll move that we approve.
She hasn't read it yet.
Oh.
Move to, move to approve action items number two, well, one, numbered one through four, as recommended in this agenda, except for number one.
No, she just has a question.
I just have a question.
Doesn't need a poll.
Okay.
Reread it as a...
Read it again, one through four.
Yeah, one through four.
Okay, so it's move to approve action items number one through four.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Mosip, supported by Trustee Barry.
I just have a quick question. I know RPS Imaging was awarded this contract. And they all, seems like the least and responsive bid. Just want to make sure that, because the other closest competitor is a little bit far out, about 20% far. So I want to make sure that RPS Imaging has a, is a sound vendor that we have high confidence in.
Trustee Mosip, I can assure you that will be you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, are there any others? Nope. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dan Brojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Pechikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thor? Trustee Watts? Yes. Chair McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgements of Correspondence.
I'm trying to recall. I don't recall any. No one else? No. Next item, please. Board Committee Reports.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On behalf of our subcommittee chair, Trustee Thor, I can tell you that Trustee Watts, Trustee Thor, and I met, it was over Zoom. We just kind of got together, put a game plan. We had our chair reach out to Becky Chadwick. Most people know who Becky is. She led, she led the administration side last year to help us, last search, not last year. Hopefully, we don't do this every year. But, so Becky has agreed to be the liaison for our subcommittee, and she's going to have Terry Hagan?
Hagan.
Hagan, yeah, support her. We are going to be working with HR and finance to begin the RFP for a search firm. What else do you tell us here? So, yeah, we're expecting some information back Wednesday or Thursday, and we can, I'm sure, Trustee Thor will report to you. He wanted to relay the message to all of our colleagues, start thinking, and maybe communicating with two community members to help us with this search. And says here that he anticipates this process to being 12 to 15 months.
That was revised.
12 to 15 months. The reason he says 12 months is that there's a lot of things that we're using from the last search that's going to cut down the time. So he's looking for the time, the timeframe to be around 12 months. Trustee Watts, did I miss anything?
No, you have it all.
On...
Trustee Pechikov?
I just have a quick question for the RFP, for the, who we're going to hire to help with the search. Did, I know the last time that we did it, we had a set of parameters of what we were looking for, from who could apply that were qualifiers, so to speak. Is that going to be developed by the committee or by?
It's going to be developed by purchasing.
Okay.
Share with the committee. I'm sure Trustee Thor will report to Chair McDonald, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Policy meeting?
Oh.
That's all I have there.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Barry. Trustee Watts?
The policy committee met earlier today, and we had discussed that Dickinson Wright will be, they have had a chance to review all of our policies. They did not see anything that was of concern, so they did an initial review. The next step is to do a deep dive into the policies. They are going to probably begin that here shortly. And then they will initially come to us with policies that may just need maybe minimal adjustments. And the idea would be that every month, we would receive policies, and then from there, decide what, go ahead and see if those policies are something that we agree with, if we need to go back to the committee or not. And anticipation is that from the beginning to the end, we're looking at spring of next year, 2023. And that was it.
I have a question. My understanding that that has been an ongoing process, so how does this differ from what has been done for the last couple of years?
So, from my understanding, is that Mrs. Clark Solo was going through the policies. Now we have a firm that specializes in policies. So as policies were coming up, she was able to tackle those.
Right.
This gives us a deep dive into all of the policies, and we'll have a group of four who are going to be looking at these policies. And they'll be all updated.
And it'll move the process along much faster, too.
Did I get that correct?
Yes. And I would just add, Committee Chair Watts, that this, this change from Vice President Clark leading the evaluation to seeking and obtaining the services of an outside firm was the result of a previous rendition of the policy committee that came to the conclusion, that I frankly agreed with, that this work would be more effective in a timely basis by contracting the services of an outside firm. We then sought various firms, including one that I believe is doing work for this board in its oversight of the school district. And then we eventually settled on this term to help us go through that. So what I would add to what the Committee Chair Watts mentioned was that this was, this change was a long time coming in a decision in a previous rendition of the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just a comment. I served on a policy committee last year, and I agree with President Cavalluna, that, yes, as policies come up, we work on them. But now with this company looking at it, this, you know, sometimes compliance changes with the state, federal government, they know what's going on there, and they'll be able to work with us and help us. And that's, that's why the decision was made.
And Amy has plenty of things to do herself.
Yes.
Trustee Pechikov?
I just want to add, though, that a lot of our policies overlap with what the P-12 policies are, because we're a P-14 district, and the verbiage for a lot of them are compatible with what we do. So we need to make sure that an outside firm understands to be aware of what we have at the P-12 level as well.
Madam Chair, thank you. Anyone else? One thing that I want to, I just want to make a statement. I have been in conversations with John Sutkowski, Vice President Sutkowski, and regarding the interim presidency. And he has said that he is very open to the idea, very open to the idea, with the time constraints of less than a year, because I think we all know that he's eager to retire. And he is currently on vacation. So he and I will have a meeting upon his return, and a decision and announcement will be made at that time. But he has told me that he had used this specific quote, and he said that I could relay it. He said, more certain than not.
There's a definitive maybe.
Yeah, exactly. A definitive maybe. So we're going to let him enjoy his vacation time without any worries, and we'll have that discussion when he comes back. And... And, and so as soon as that happens, we'll have an announcement for you. Anyone else? Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Satisfied bunch, is that what I'm seeing? Okay, I see none. Next item, please.
Board member commentary.
Trustee Moser?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Blackmail and Queens Group for their conference last month. I was, I was able to attend some of it and learned a good deal. Thanks to Dr. Harbaugh, Calvin Harbaugh, for, for all of the things that he does at the college with that conference. I guess it's a very, very important conference and it brings our students together and we learn a lot about their culture and their backgrounds. And it's so important that we familiarize, at least myself, about the importance of our students' heritage and what they bring to the table. So I wanted to acknowledge that and enjoy, enjoy the graduations.
Good, I'll add that into the vein with what President Cavalluna started.
I'd like to thank the administration also for putting up the, the graduations. I know we had the bunch, the early college, the nursing and the morning and afternoon. I think they were very, very well put together and families were just happy, finally, to do something in person. And, and grads were, you know, walking off the stage and that was really, really amazing to see, amazing sight. It was, it was probably the best, best thing of this job is to watch these grads walk off that stage.
Without question. I wanted to just give President Cavalluna a little kudos for his efforts in helping us understand and get a better comprehension of the heritage of others by his series that he's done explaining holidays or giving a deeper dive into holidays and different traditions.
Absolutely.
So I think that has helped as well in that, in that respect. So thank you for that. Trustee, or Trustee Barry?
You said this is a satisfied group tonight and it's obviously right after graduation, everybody's in a good mood. But I want to share a success, local success story.
Okay.
One of our graduates this past weekend is a PTA member during public schools and her, her friends, I guess, or PTA friends encouraged her to go back to school. She was one of our graduates this past weekend, so, and we don't need to mention the name, but somebody we all know said, hey, if Hussein can go back to school, you should too. And she shared with me that was one of the reasons she was encouraged to, so.
Outstanding.
That was awesome.
Good stuff. I do want to make an announcement that I am in the process of working on a board retreat for us. And I'm hoping that it will be a combination of training and team building. I have contacted MASB. I have not heard back from them. It's, they confirmed that they received my request. So we're still working through the details, but just to give everyone one of the heads up, plan on a training and team building retreat sometime in the not-too-distant future.
Is that going to be the theme of the training, team building?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, but it'll also be.
That's what I'm hearing, so yeah.
Yeah, but I, I have not nailed down what they have to offer. I have a kind of an idea of what we need, so those conversations need to be had.
I like that, yeah, good, thank you.
And we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Next, oh, President Cavalluna.
Yeah, as an ex-official member, I'd like to just say a couple of things. Madam Chair, for my teammates here, MASB is the Michigan Association of School Boards. So that's, that's what the chair is referencing. And Trustee Moser, thank you for the compliments about graduation. I need to tell you that I deserve about one half of 1% of the credit for that, maybe less. I just show up and, and smile. The people who deserve the real credit for that, in no particular order, are Karen Sedanowitz, Sean Stevens, and Holly Diamond. I don't see any of those folks here. Of course, there are a lot of faculty who join us there, but the, the real wedding planning and it really does take that kind of effort is Karen Sedanowitz, Sean Stevens, and Holly Diamond. I did see my friend Bob James, who was throwing money around at the podium here. But, but he plays an important role also. He, he meets with the graduates as they're staging before they go into the arena and he, he plays part herding of cats and then part comedian, stand-up comedian. And he does a great job with it and they always really respond to him very well. And then I also wanted to say, Madam Chair, the Cultural Heritage Education Series that we do, I, I deserve even less credit for that than I do the graduation. That is almost the entire Herculean, Herculean effort of Rhonda DeLong. She, she just, I, I think she came up with the idea. It's happened so long ago, I can't remember whose idea it was, Vice President DeLong, but she, she stands me up in front of the camera and helps me remember what to say and everything else other than me reading a teleprompter is her work. So that, that is something that she deserves a pat on the back for. So thank you for.
Among many.
Yeah. So thank you both for giving me a chance to call out my teammates who deserve the credit.
Absolutely. Since you mentioned everyone, I want to acknowledge, if I may, Madam Chair, the security team, thank you for what you do. I know you don't get thanked a lot, only when you save a life and you're on TV, but thank you for making that graduation, especially the early college, so amazing and so flawless. So it was great. Thank you to each member of the security team. Thanks. Campus safety.
Anyone else? Next item.
Future meeting dates, Monday, June 6, 2022, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, June 13, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees Audit Committee meeting, 5:15 at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, June 13, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Before you close the meeting, you have to remind Trustee Thor that he was absent and we made it in under an hour.
Yes, I did. And I can remind him.
Coincidence, I'm just saying.
We do have a dignitary in the audience.
I saw Councilman Abraham.
Councilman Abraham, thank you for being here with us.
Absolutely, thank you for helping. And we are adjourned.